Yeah. Now the table's organized differently Wayne, this is really a test.
They're changing it around.
Yeah, I know, this is really tough. Alright, we're gonna call the meeting to order. The meeting is called to order. Before we begin the business of the ten or so articles that we have tonight, I will ask the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Fredericks, to introduce the people at this table, and then Mr. Mackey, the people at the Finance Committee table. That gives you a little time to think about it Tom, get the names straight in your mind. Mr. Fredericks?
I'm Wayne Fredericks, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. To my right, on the end, is Kathy Belbin, our town clerk; Mike Callahan, our town council; Don Johnson, our town manager; Vice Chair of the Board Herman Kabakov, to my right; to my left are Chairman Peter Ashton, Nancy Tavernier, and Dorey Hunter. Pass it to...
Well, well done Wayne, but the applause wasn't really deafening.
You want some applause?
Yeah. Mr. Mackey?
Here we go again. He's already called me John once tonight. On your left is... on my right is John Prendable; coming across is Drew Elder, he has just joined us, welcome; Chuck Homestead, he's been on it forever, haven't you? Bob Evans joined us as a full member, yours truly; and Jennifer Melikan has joined us as an associate, what, last month or the month before? Thank... thank you.
How many in the audience have never been to a town meeting before? Is there anyone who hasn't been? There's quite a few people haven't been. Well, we'll see if we can make it somewhat understandable for you. I won't go through a whole bunch of rules, but I'll mention a couple of things. The way we generally deal with the articles, you see a group of articles that came out in your warrant, we will read a motion off, and the motion should be very close to the article. It is not always the same as the article, but it's close, and the motion is what you're voting on. Motion will be put in front of you, it will be seconded, and then the Board of Selectmen, normally the Board of the Finance Committee, and in some cases the School Committee, will give their recommendations to the town. And then it's open to general debate, and after that debate is concluded, we vote on it. We generally vote by voice vote. If I can't tell from the voice vote whether it has passed or not, I'll ask for standing count. If it's too close to call, then we have some tellers who will come in and actually count the vote. This night, you're very fortunate, because you're gonna be treated to something we don't do in town meetings very much, and this is a thrilling thing to watch. We're gonna have a balloted vote tonight, it's very exciting. And it raves the audience to a fever pitch almost all the time that we have one of these. And you have some little cards that have yes or no printed on them. They will be important to you when you come to vote later on, but if your memory's like mine, I would prefer to tell you what to do with those just before we vote on Article One, and not rely on, you know, memorizing it for some long period of time before we vote. When we speak here, we will go to microphones, and I will recognize you. I may not know your name, but I will recognize you as the lady at the front microphone or the gentleman at the back microphone. And tonight, because we have some complex articles, I'm going to divide the microphones into two groups, which we'll call pro and con microphones. If you're gonna speak in favor of an article, I would ask you to come to these two microphones down front or that one in the back. If you were going to speak against an article, I would ask you to use any of the other three on my left. This helps, because we balance debate off between a pro and a con microphone, so if somebody gets up and moves the previous question, which cuts debate off, we've had approximately the same number of people talking on both sides of an issue. I do accept the motion, and we always have accepted the motion of asking for the previous question. What that really means is that we cut off debate. It takes two-thirds to pass, it is almost always fairly close to unanimous. Some people have fought over the years, and I know who is going to make that motion, and I give them preferential treatment. That is a dastardly thought to accuse me of, it does happen to be true in many cases, however. We generally follow rules of parliamentary procedure here quite closely, as identified in this small book called Town Meeting Time. We do not follow Robert's Rules of Order, because quite frankly, they're too confusing. For me, you could understand them, but it's difficult for me to deal with them. We do not allow amendments to amendments. We wanna dispose of one amendment before we pick up on another, and that's again, because it's very confusing if you try to amend amendments. When you're speaking, you have a right to say what you will about the article, but not about the character of any previous speaker or anybody in the town at all, other than to say how wonderful they are. We don't accept comments that are negative about people at town meeting, and we're pretty strict on that procedure. When you have a question, and you want that question answered, please refer the question through me to the party that will answer it. In other words, I don't want two people to be talking to each other, one asking questions and one answering them, without my being able to control it. It always doesn't work out that way, but it works out fairly well. Oh, let's see, before we begin... oh, I knew what I was gonna tell you tonight. There are some politicians who have made a career of making confessions lately. It seems to me you may have heard some of them. And then they issue apologies, which don't always sound like apologies. And I find myself in that same position tonight, not, not, mind you. Not mind you for the reason that you may be thinking. But I've been doing this job for the town for 21 to 22 years, and I have made all-town meetings during that period. But it is my understanding that the School Committee would like a town meeting on December 1st, and the Board of Selectmen have called a town meeting for December 1st, and unless you want me to do it remote control from Lisbon, I won't be here. And I'm truly apologetic for that. I'm gonna be out of the country, and it's something that I can't cancel without paying an enormous financial penalty, and so therefore you can see where my heart really lies. We will have a substitute moderator for that night. Most likely, it will be Dick O'Brien, who's the water district moderator. He is fully competent to do the job. I'm hoping he isn't too competent, but just competent enough to get it done. You will, as a body, be required to elect him at that meeting. Without going into it in great detail, he will be nominated. Anyone else could be nominated, but then you'll hold an election directly at the meeting. It can be a voice vote, it doesn't need to be secret ballot. And then if you elect Dick, or whomever you elect, will run the meeting for that night. But if it is Dick, he will be prepared to do the job, and he's a fully qualified and competent person, so I'm sure the meeting will go along very well. So that is my confession. Not as good as some others I've heard lately, but the best I can do. I'm gonna recognize B. Perkins. Yes. It is not on.
It is not on.
It is on now.
It is now, thank you. For Spring Hill Road. I would like to move to limit debate to five minutes for each speaker except the presenters.
Do I hear a second? This is a motion that is not debatable. It takes two-thirds to pass, however, so because it's not debatable, it's been moved and seconded, we will now vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion is carried. I'll recognize the gentleman at the front microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Oh, before I, before I begin, you're gonna think this is really fixed now, I know you will. But B., will you keep the time since you made the motion? And if you happen to have a sign that had time on it, it would be helpful. God, how quickly you did that, B. And she has a stopwatch, too? I hate doing things like that, because you may think this is rigged. The gentleman at the front.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Josh Chernin, I'm a clerk of the Planning Board. As many of you know, we've been working on an update to the town master plan for the better part of a year. Earlier this year, we held several public meetings to which many of you came, and we solicited your input and your comments on the 1991 master plan and where you'd like the update to go. Since then, we've been working on that update. We've gone through now six drafts to emerge with what we call a draft. And it is time now again to solicit your comments on that draft. To that end, we're having two public meetings at the end of this month. Thursday, October 22nd, and Tuesday, October 27th. Both of the meeting in Town Hall. Both start at 7:30, but if you could come at 7:15 to register early, we'd appreciate that. We hope to have a large crowd. The material at the two meetings will be identical, so there's no need to attend both of them. But again, this is your chance to give us your comments on the master plan update. We hope to have a final draft sometime in November. And again, Thursday, October 22nd, and Tuesday, October 27th, at 7:15 in Town Hall. Thank you.
Okay, we will now begin with the consent calendar. I think most of you know how the consent calendar works. I will review it very quickly. This was an idea that Nancy Tavernier thought of some years ago to speed up town meeting, and we take articles that aren't controversial, and we try to pass them all as a group. I read the motion, then I read off the article, and if two of you in the audience want that discussed in its normal stead, its normal place in the warrant, just yell out "hold", and it will come off the consent calendar. Those that aren't held will be voted on without discussion as a group. Normally, we do not do this, but there's one article on the consent calendar that may require no more than a 15-second explanation as to why it's on the consent calendar. And before I begin with the motion, I'm going to ask Mr. Kabakov to explain why Article VII is on the consent calendar. Mr. Kabakov?
Yeah, Article VII is on the consent calendar. It's actually an opportunity the town has because of the closing down of some waste treatment plants to take in and broker some waste that we didn't foresee that we have the opportunity to do. This is a moneymaker for the town. The only reason it's on the consent calendar and on the warrant at all is it's run through an enterprise fund, and spending through an enterprise fund's gotta be approved by town meeting. That's my 15 seconds. Hopefully, we'll be allowed to go ahead and take advantage of this opportunity, make about 100,000 bucks or so. And if you want any further, more detailed information, then we can discuss it then. But that's why it's on the consent calendar.
Okay, we'll take it on the consent calendar. If that explanation is not enough for you, two people can hold it, and we'll take it off and discuss it in its normal position. I will read the motion for the consent calendar it is. Mr. Fredericks moves that the town take up the four articles as listed in the consent calendar on page one of the warrant. Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded. I will now read off the four articles. Article VII. Article VIII. Article IX. Article IX. Article X. None are held. We will now vote. All in favor of the motion, as read, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. We will now move to Article I. Before we get into the discussion of Article I, I would like to make a brief announcement. Article I is an article that will be voted by secret ballot. It is an article which is certainly discussable, but it is not an article that is amendable. There is some common sense reasons for why it should not be amendable, but beyond common sense, there are some legal reasons why it is not amendable. And the town council may choose to make a comment to verify that, because my legal word is not worth as much as you pay me to do this job. Do you wanna have the microphone given to Mr. Callahan, please?
I spoke with the moderator briefly before this town meeting about this subject. An amendment of the Regional School Committee Agreement is proposed by the Regional School Committee. You can vote it up and down, but you can't second guess and amend what they have proposed. The recourse, if you don't like it, is to vote against it, and hope they come back with a different amendment.
And the quantum of vote required is a majority, a simple majority. Alright, we will now move into it, and I will read off the motion. Ms. Stuntz moves that the town approve the amended Acton-Boxborough Regional School District Agreement and accept the provisions of General Law, Chapter 71, Section 16B, 4th Paragraph, on the conditions set forth in the warrant article. Do I hear a second? Been moved and seconded, I'll recognize Ms. Stuntz to her motion.
Let me turn this thing on. Mr. Moderator, do you mind if I introduce the School Committee?
I'm sorry?
May I introduce the School Committee?
Oh, please do.
This is the Acton Public School Committee and the Acton segment of the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee. On my right is Michael Coppolino, Mike Scanlon, Jesse Liberty, Mary Ann Ashton. I'm Lee Stuntz, I'm Vice Chairman of the Regional School Committee. The three members from Boxborough who are not here tonight because they are at a simultaneous town meeting in Boxborough for this same article are John Fallon, Cheryl Levine, and Bill Ray. Pam Harding Barrett cannot be with us tonight, her mother is seriously ill. No, good, I love it when technology works. Great. First of all, what is the regional agreement? The regional agreement is an agreement between the two towns of Acton and Boxborough made in 1955, that's 43 years ago, for the education of our children, grades seven through 12. Since that time, there have been very few minor amendments. For those of you who were at annual town meeting last year, this April, you will remember that we voted... am I in the way? Oh, okay. We voted to amend the agreement to reflect weighted votes to abide by the law. The benefits during this 43 years to Acton and Boxborough have been many. First of all, the region has received millions of dollars in state aid. It would not have received without regionalization. Our children have had, whoops, our children have had the additional benefit of additional choices in academics, athletics, and extracurricular activities that neither town could have afforded on their own. The key terms of the agreement under which we are now functioning are that the region consists of grades seven through 12, all buildings must be in Acton, the operating expenses are based on a yearly per pupil enrollment, and the capital and construction are paid by the two towns 95% from Acton and 5% from Boxborough. Why do we need to change it? First of all, it's 40 years later, and times have changed. In 1955, Boxborough had approximately 10 to 12% of the students in the region. Now they have 18%, and that percentage is rising. In other words, Boxborough's pupil enrollment is growing faster than Acton's, even though Acton's is growing. The Ed Reform Act of 1993 deemed that Boxborough was a wealthier town than Acton. It deemed it was able to pay more per pupil. So the Ed Reform Act of 1993 superseded the regional agreement. Boxborough, for the last five years, has been paying a penalty above what they would have paid in the regional agreement. That penalty has been anywhere from $80,000 a year to $300,000 a year. We have burgeoning enrollment at the region. We need more space at the junior high and high school. And so it seemed a good time to look at the agreement. What was the process for this? The regional agreement group was formed. That was formed by three citizens of, three citizens from Boxborough, three citizens from Acton, and the superintendent of schools, Dr. Zimmerman. The three from Boxborough were John Fallon, Cheryl Levine, Chairman of the Region, and Sandy Pitcher. The three from Acton were Selectman Dorey Hunter, Anne Ridley, here in the front row, and myself. And may I say, it was a delightful group to work with. Our goals were twofold. First of all, we wanted to come up with something that both towns could agree on. And that's very important to remember as we go forward discussing and voting on this. We wanted to help create a community of Acton and Boxborough working together for the good of their children, our children. The tasks we had, first of all, we wanted to clean and update the language. Much of the language in the 1955 agreement was just that. It was archaic, references to things that no longer existed. And we wanted to update the financial arrangement. So, what has changed in the amendment which is now before you? First of all, the financial changes. By Massachusetts state law, regional school committees do not have to notify, well, they have to notify towns that they are assessing a debt, but they do not have to have a town meeting vote. It has always been the practice of the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee that we take any debt authorization to town meeting. This addition to the agreement codifies that. By amending the agreement this way, we are saying the School Committee must bring any debt authorization to town meeting, to both town meetings. And let me make that clear, whenever I say town meeting about the region, it's always about both Acton and Boxborough. Three-year rolling averages will apply to all three financial categories of assessment. That means that, for instance, if I were assessing costs to the town of Acton, or the region were assessing costs to the town of Acton in 1998, it would be an average of Acton's per pupil enrollment from 1996, 97, and 98. Pupil enrollments are taken on October 1st. That is the state's date of choice. So those are always the dates that we go by. We now have three categories of assessment. Those three categories in this amendment, those are construction, capital, and operating expense. The construction expenses are allocated, everything's allocated, remember, on the three-year rolling average. The construction expenses are allocated per pupil, with Boxborough's share being reduced by five percentage points. Now, I want you to remember back to the previous slide. Remember when I said that Boxborough had about 10% of the students, and they paid 5% of the construction and capital? Historically, they were given a 5% bonus for being the small town, for having less say in the district, for the knowledge that any financial decisions would be run by Acton because Acton was so much larger a portion of the district. So when we were negotiating this round, we left those five percentage points in. But what we did was we based it on per pupil. So, if this amendment is passed, for construction costs alone, Boxborough, for instance, has about 18% of the students in the region right now. They would be paying 13% of the construction costs instead of 5% of the construction costs, which is what the present agreement has. However, if, as is likely, the Boxborough percentage of students goes up, they will pay their percentage of students minus 5%. So if the Boxborough percentage of students hits 20 or 25%, they would then pay 15 or 20% respectively, which you always have to compare to 5% now. The capital expenses. Practically speaking, the capital expenses have always been lumped with the construction expenses and paid 95.5. The reason for this is many times, capital expenses, whether they be the HVAC units, which we just put on the high school, or computers, are large enough items so they are bonded. Any bonding expense has been paid 95.5. In this new agreement, when we buy computers for the region, Boxborough will pay its per pupil share. Operating expenses have always been allocated per pupil and will continue to be so. Those are the yearly expenses of running the school. Other changes which have been incorporated in this agreement are, a Boxborough member must be present for a quorum. The buildings can be located in either town in the district, not just in Acton. The regional agreement may be reviewed every five years. The School Committee is instructed to look at it and see if it is necessary. And there were some cleanup and clarity items. For instance, in one portion of the agreement, it talked about the regional school. At that point, there was only one school for seven through 12. So we changed those items. What does this regional agreement mean to Acton? It means that Boxborough now pays per pupil for both capital and operating expenses. It means that Boxborough would now pay per pupil minus five percentage points for construction expenses. It would mean there would be a three-year rolling average of costs, which would even out the cost impact for both districts, both towns. Now, admittedly, if your enrollment is going up, it means the curve lags behind a little bit. But when your enrollment goes down, the curve also lags behind a little bit. But it does make it easier for either town to predict their expenses for the next year. Now, I'm asking you to vote tonight to accept the amendment to the regional agreement. This is a compromise. This is a compromise. We needed to have a compromise in order for it to be voted in both towns. There are things in here which would be better for Boxborough, and there are things in here which would be better for Acton. I would like to make it clear that the article you're voting on will do two things. It will amend the regional agreement, and secondly, it will take away the ed reform penalty to Boxborough. So it will put both towns back on the level playing field so that we're both paying expenses by the new amended agreement.
Does that complete your remarks, Ms. Stuntz? Okay, from the Finance Committee. Mr. Hunter, you're going to speak to this, I assume? Okay.
We confused the moderator by using the different stairs.
Yes. I don't think your speaker is on, Dorey.
We've confused the moderator since we now use the other stairway. I speak for the Selectmen, and I was also a member of the negotiating team. The Selectmen strongly support of this proposed new agreement. This is, as Lee's has pointed out, negotiation. It is a compromise. It is not a surrender completely by one side or the other. Remember that in negotiations—and by the way, I do this in my nine-to-five job—remember in negotiations, one has to consider one's leverage and one's position. Acton's principal leverage in changing this 43-year-old agreement more to Acton's benefit is the question of the renovation and expansion of the junior high school. If this agreement is not approved, the high school will be a more difficult project to pass in town. If it passes, we will have lost all leverage to ever change the agreement. If it does not pass, we have hit—we'll have held our kids hostage in this case. The 5 percent is carried forward in a different form as a historic means of getting Boxborough's agreement. It is a treasured advantage to them, makes up a little bit for their lack of control. They say, "A deal is a deal. You agreed to it in 1943." It's a difficult seller to revise it. It is, however, for Boxborough, let's admit it, the best deal in the state. But this is a much better agreement than what we've had. The three-year rolling average is a common provision in other regional agreements. Now what does Boxborough gain for this? They gain some insurance and control from guard to borrowing, as Lee Stuntz indicated. They avoid the ed reform tax. Of course, that's an uncertain future because the act's up for renewal shortly. That ed reform tax from '91 to '99 has cost them just a little over $450,000. And they get some smoothing and damping of the upward percentages. What does Acton gain? Acton gets Boxborough's share of construction up two-and-a-half times what it had been. And don't neglect the capital exclusion from the 95.5, the old formula. In the last 16 years with no major construction, Acton has paid $770,000 extra dollars in nominal costs under that arrangement, including capital items in construction. That, translated into today's dollars, would be more than $1 million. To put it apples-to-apples, in '91 to '99, the same time that I gave you the $450-odd thousand for Boxborough's ed reform tax, Acton has been charged under the historic 95.5 a little less than $300,000. In another year or two, those two curves would cross, and Boxborough would be paying more under the ed reform tax than we were under the capital arrangement. But of course, we know something else is going to intervene because we're talking about school construction. This is a good compromise. I would suggest very strongly that you approve it. It is always easy to second-guess negotiations. I have clients who do it to me all the time. You go in and you work through something, and you come out with a compromise, and the client wants to know why he didn't get total victory. That's not how negotiation works. We have no option of withdrawing from this district. If we withdraw from the district, under the law, the Boxborough gets the buildings. I mean, that's a no-brainer. We have to live with these people. They're our neighbors. I would suggest that it's a hard sell tonight in Boxborough, and I would suggest that Acton approve this agreement that is negotiated. Thank you.
The Finance Committee, please. There still are a few seats down front here for anybody who's interested.
This evening, we have an opportunity to see where we want to go in the future. Your elected officials have gone through and are recommending to you a modified regional agreement. I'd like to try and tell you what we on the FinCom think about this. By the way, get it off the line, we on the FinCom voted to support this measure unanimously. I'm going to try and tell you why. Before I go on, I would like to make one statement that a friend of mine made to me as I was walking up the door—the driveway here. And this had nothing to do with finance, but to emphasize to you that Acton-Boxborough is our school. I mean, among the people with hair as white as mine here, our kids went there. And it wasn't Acton High School that happened to have Boxborough youngsters. It wasn't Boxborough High School that happened to have Acton youngsters. It was Acton-Boxborough. And with that in mind, I'd like to go through the regional agreement. As you see on the charts, we're going to take—it takes just the cost, and we'll get into that. And I'm going to try and avoid getting into numbers that have more than three significant digits because I'm sure you'll be able to understand it. I won't be able to explain it. I think the next two items are far more important—well, I take that back—are as important as the cost allocation. They have introduced a new cost category, and I will go in a little bit more detail than Lee's did. And from the FinCom point of view, in fact, I think it was the FinCom recommendation and the subcommittee responded to us. We provide it for periodic update. Now if you look at paragraph 7.c., you will see that they have put in there that the regional agreement will be looked at every five years. I think it's very significant. When Lee's was briefing this, she used the word "may," and that was what your elected officials agreed to. From the FinCom point of view, we would have liked to said "will be looked at every five years." And we think that you, the voters, might want to remind the school committee in five years that you want to see an update to that view. But what you're voting on for tonight is a "may." Now I am going to proceed up the chart with the next items. From a project management point of view, you know, you can't get away 30, 35 years of doing it. It is very, very important that you categorize exactly what it is you're paying for, and when you're paying for it, and in many cases, how. Your current agreement, with the best of intentions—by the way, none of this is criticism of the past. This is a desire to learn from the past. The current agreement recognizes two expenses. One's called construction.
Excuse me, Tom. Let me just interrupt you for a moment, please. I hesitate to do this, but how many people in the non-voting section are actually non-voters? Would you raise your hand? I hate to do this to you, but we have to—we've got 60 or 70 or 80 voters who don't have seats. We have a secondary room. It isn't the same as this room, obviously, from the standpoint of participating in town meeting, but I'm going to have to ask you to go to that secondary room and leave this space for voters and so that we can bring more voters in. I'm very sorry for doing that, but I see no other option. Tom, I'm just going to interrupt the meeting for two seconds so that you have the full attention of everybody. Thank you very much for your cooperation. I tell you, we better have enough voters to fill that space, or my name's going to be And there are a number of people in the aisles who are voters. I would suggest you get those seats quickly because the fire chief says we're close to violating the law. And on the wrong side of being close. We do have some seats—for those of you who are in the aisle, we do have some seats down front. I can count one, two, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15. I can count 15 or 16 seats down here. Okay, Tom, any time you feel comfortable with beginning again, go right ahead. Boy, we can wait a minute, whatever you feel.
Did you hear him say I had to go back to the beginning?
No.
No, no.
No.
No, no.
Anytime—you feel comfortable in beginning again. I didn't mean at the beginning. Resuming your talk where you left off. Better still, come to the end of it.
God save me from my friends.
Why not? Why not? That's true.
Okay. Where were we in this? He's going to interrupt me again, I'll bet. Now, let us—I'm sorry. Let us return. We're now trying to go into the resource management, financial management, and how you handle costs. The original agreement had two ways of handling costs. One was called construction. One was called operational. When you're building a new building, that was very, very clear, construction. When you were paying a teacher's salary, heating a building, et cetera, that was obvious. That was operational. What happened over time is that all items that could be bonded and were bonded became construction. Now think of that. Your computer systems could be bonded. They were bonded. Your heating and ventilation system, you know, 18 months ago, we voted to fix it right in this room. Cost us $1 million. That happened to be bondable, and it was bonded, and Acton paid 95 percent. The members of the school regional agreement—change of the school regional agreement—have introduced a new item, and it's called capital. Now, that will take care of items that are bondable and wisely should be bondable, but will be paid at the pro-rata of the student population rather than at the 95.5. Your construction cost in your proposed really means when you're putting up new walls. You're going to put up a new school? Fine. You're going to put up an addition? Fine. And it will be construction. And that's where we get into the pro-rata plus the 5 percent discount for Boxborough. Your capital and your operational will be paid on a pro-rata, student pro-rata basis. This is significant. If you think about the $1 million we put in for the heating and ventilation system. We came out, under the proposed system, we would have saved approximately $70,000. And now is as good a time as any to address the difference of the 5 percent discount that goes to Boxborough. The $1 million that was used and was gone in the old way would have cost Acton $950,000. In the new way, it costed $870,000, $880,000, for a savings to Acton of $70,000. Now, if the 5 percent discount to Boxborough was not there—the 5 percent represents about $45,000. So you're looking at a $70,000 savings in your hand that you're going to vote tonight, or if, you know, we hold out and we tell Boxborough no discount, you're talking about $115,000. From a fiscal point of view, $70,000 in my pocket makes a little bit more sense than gambling on $115 with a possibility of losing it. So with the changes, we reduce Acton's liability on construction on the bonding. Capital items such as, just went over, computer systems, the heating and ventilation, your infrastructure heating systems, will be based on a three-year sliding scale. And remember, the non-construction, bondable items will be on that sliding scale and not on the 95.5. As we've been saying from the previous charts, the 95.5 is modified. The three-year sliding average deserves a couple of words. The sliding average is a technique used in business—in business, in government, in civics, et cetera, to just balance out peaks and valleys. With the sliding average, if Boxborough goes up very high, very quickly, we would end up—if they go ahead of us by 2 percent, we would end up bursting to wash. If they stay within 2 percent and we start going there, it ends up to the benefit of Acton to the tune of approximately $30,000 a year. The sliding average, based on the projected—for the next four years, where we can really pick up the projections because the youngsters are still in, you know, third, fourth, fifth grade, there will be a wash. There will be no expense to Acton. The 5 percent Boxborough advantage, we talked about it, and the $70,000 savings to 150, potential 115. Now, next chart will have a hypothetical scenario, and I will conclude the briefing with the benchmark that we introduced last year to the $300,000 house. The first column, after the explanation of the rows, represents what goes on right now. And you'll notice Acton's savings—we decided not to put a zero there, but you notice it's blank. As you go through the proposal, you must think about what is going to happen in the future. We're right now at 8218 on the pro-rata student population. In all likelihood, very soon, like, two years, we're going to be at 8020. Projections keep going out to 7525, and there's some projection I've seen around 2007, 2008 will be at the 30 and 70—uh, 70 and 30, excuse me. And I think the chart is fairly self-explanatory. The second row tells what Acton would pay under those conditions. Third row is what Boxborough appears and Acton's savings. Now, it's very important that you consider that. That is for a typical $1 million, $1 million of bondable—it's both principal and interest. So when we say we're going to bond 15 million at 5 percent for 20 years, you realize that doubles, and we're really paying 30 million over 20 years. This is for 1 million. And now we'll put up the hypothetical $15 million bond, and you can see the savings there, the potential savings there. Now, as you put this in perspective, and to the $300,000 home, we're talking, over the 20-year period, only a savings, when it adds up, of $500. But it is a step in the direction, and is a step in equity between the two towns. In conclusion, I'd like to emphasize that the agreement you have in front of you recognizes that times change, and you have an opportunity—we, as the voters, have an opportunity to change it every five years if we remind the school committee we would like them to. And secondly, we have here a new cost category that definitely saves money and puts things in the proper perspective. And third, appears to be at this edge of cost beneficial. Thank you for your time.
Did the school committee wish to make a comment on this as well? I understand that they do. Is that correct or wrong? It is wrong? Okay, it is wrong. Okay, Mr. Cadillac. Please do.
I have 300 seconds to try and save you $4.5 million. That's $15,000 a second, so please pay attention. Well, before I even get into that, there are two things that you've heard about in this proposed new agreement, which is the three-year rolling average and the 5 percent discount to Boxborough, which sounds so very reasonable until you do the numbers. You really haven't seen the numbers. I'll show them to you. What you're looking at now is— What you're looking at now is the projected Boxborough percentage enrollment, projected off to the future years, obviously, and the existing numbers up through, right here, about 80 and 1/2 percent right now. There is no dispute about these numbers, but please note that the slope increases. There is no up and down, which is very important when you try and do three-year rolling averages. If it was going up and down, yes, some years it would be a benefit to Acton, some years to Boxborough. That's not the case. In the foreseeable future, going to a three-year rolling average is a big benefit to Boxborough. This is what that chart, this column are the same numbers that are on that chart. The next column is if you compute the enrollment, which you then will use as calculating to allocate the cost, as a three-year rolling average. The last column, which looks like very small percentages, is the difference. I'll go fast, I don't have much time. The second column here simply represents the budget year for which the year's enrollment figures apply to, and the third column is the same as the differences that I calculated in the previous graph from between what we now use as a current year's enrollment ratio to the proposed three-year rolling average. The next two columns show you the dollars. What you have to remember is that we're talking small percentages of a large number. The operating budget right now is about $14 million, the part that gets split between the two towns, so 1 percent is $140,000. I put in an eight-year inflation factor, that's probably low, so over the next seven years, if we change to this innocuous sounding three-year rolling average, the difference, the additional cost to Acton, which we do not have now, is 1 and 3/4 million dollars. We're not doing that now. I'm always told I put too much detail and I should make it simple, so here it is. That's the effect, just on the operating budgets, of going to a three-year rolling average, which we are not doing now, that's based on very predictable information, and yes, we definitely have an operating budget each year. We don't necessarily have new construction each year. That's something that this town meeting, as well as Boxborough, has to vote for, but the operating budgets are a given. So this is a very solid projection. Now, let's look at the 5 percent discount. What you heard Tom say, and I don't disagree with it, that if you start with the existing agreement, which is the 95 percent Acton, 5 percent Boxborough, of course, going to what's proposed is better, but the 95.5, as far as I'm concerned, is a non-starter. Acton's never going to vote for an override way. They have to pay 95 percent of new construction, and Boxborough knows that. As a matter of fact, that's one of the two reasons why Boxborough is talking about revising this agreement at all, the second being the state imposed penalty, which please refer to, and I'll show you. So, if you start with the assumption that the agreement as proposed is a change from the existing 95.5, yeah, that's okay. But if you look at it from the point of view of what it would be if we simply, fairly, logically, split the cost according to enrollment, 5 percent on the proposed $19.1 million for the junior high, now, I'm out of time, is, I'll have to jump ahead. Well, you see how it works. There is another number for the senior high school, which is twice as much.
Do you have a point of order, sir? Excuse me? Well, go ahead, sir.
Here is the total.
No, Mr. Cadillac, he has a point of order, he said.
Go ahead.
I'm Alfred LaFrenia at Park Street. In the absence of any other speakers, I wonder, Mr. Chairman, can't you relieve this time constraint that we have on the speaker who has devoted a lot of time and is very useful?
The answer is, I cannot do that, and what, I don't know there are no other speakers, there's just no one standing at the moment, so I don't know how many other people are going to speak. Mr. Cadillac, we'll give you another 30 seconds or so to wind up.
The conclusion is, if you add up these things, and these are, there's more, there's a lot more, it's all in Boxborough's favor. We're looking at anywhere from $4 to $6 million that we're basically giving to Boxborough. You want to write a check to Boxborough for that much money? Fine, I don't. I will have one more.
I think we can't, Charlie? I'm sorry, we can't do that. Okay, that's fine. Okay, very good. Liz, I'll recognize you very quickly for short comment.
Just very briefly, Charlie, I am thrilled that you don't think there's any disagreement about the projected enrollment figures. Secondly, we have a 95.5 right now. I can't do figures very fast in my head, but for construction costs, yes, I mean, if we could get per pupil from Boxborough, we are paying $745,000, but I believe it's over a million dollars more that we would be getting on the junior high project if we vote this versus what we've had. The other number I'd like to put in front of you is if there is a junior high project and a high school project, and as Charlie agrees, the enrollment figures show that we are running out of space, we will gain $8 million from this agreement if Boxborough's percentage numbers go up to 30 percent.
Okay, I'm going to recognize the gentleman at the front, but one second. We have another room that is now filled with people, there are 150 people in it, and we are going to need to have someone go over as an assistant moderator to handle that crowd. What that really means is you will need to help them interrupt me so that I know someone over there wants to speak, or better still, send them over here to stand in line if they want to speak. I hate to, there is a microphone over there, but it would probably be better if they could come into this room to speak, but they can speak from that microphone over there. So I'm going to have to ask for someone to volunteer to do that, and I'm looking at Mr. Flood or Mr. Aronson. Would either one of you be willing to do that? Neither one of you are willing? Yes, Mr. Aronson, would you be willing to do that? I truly appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you very much. And now, sir, the microphone is yours.
First time to stand at a microphone, Peter Crude, One Sandus Trail. I was very interested in Mr. Cadillac's presentation, so I'd like to relinquish my five minutes to hear some more from what he has to say.
Can't do it. Sorry.
Why?
Because I said so. Simple as that.
Just wanted to make that clear.
All right, okay, fair enough. Other comments? Yes, Mr. Swenson.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like somebody to clarify for me the definition of capital cost, because it refers to Section A1 and A3, and I read those, and I can't figure out what's in capital cost. Question number one. Question number two pertains to Section 5F. In event that additional towns are admitted to the region under provisions of Section 8, formulas in Sections 5 shall be renegotiated, but it does not explain how, however, that refers me to Section 8, by amendment of this agreement adopted and so forth, upon acceptance of by town or towns seeking admission, and that refers me back to Section 7. It says, nothing in this section shall prevent admission of a new town or towns to the district. I should like to know what that process is, will town meeting vote on it, and so forth. Recall, historically, we had a town meeting wherein it was proposed that Maynard joined the regional district, and that was the largest attendance in town meeting that I can remember in the 30-plus years that I have attended town meeting.
Okay, let's just get those two questions answered. Mr. Hunter, do you want to take a swing at those? Go ahead.
The agreement has, as the existing agreement has, a section in regard to amendments and a section in regard to admission of towns. The section that you refer to that says that would not apply, that would be renegotiated, has to do with the financial split. It was the agreement of the group working on the renegotiation that we were, Acton and Boxborough, working on these specific numbers, which Mr. Cadillac and Ms. Stunts are debating, and that we were not setting a precedent for another town. Yes, if Town X comes along, there would be a negotiation in regard to how numbers would be split with it. It would be brought to a town meeting vote here and in that town and in Boxborough if it was a regional agreement, and it would be voted just as the unsuccessful vote was in Maynard requires a vote at this meeting.
Mr. Swenson, do you have another question?
Well, the first question, I'm not clear on the distinction between capital cost, construction cost, and operating cost. The definitions seem very vague to me. Can somebody explain this in more precise terms?
Well, I'm the person, I'm sorry, Ms. Martin.
Yes.
I'm the person that probably labored over that and originally introduced the capital idea. Let me put it in as simple and layman terms as I can, which would not, of course, do for a lawyer putting into agreement, but basically, if you're building this room, that's construction. If you're putting AV equipment or another moving wall or something else that's a fixture in this room that's not done every year but is a way of a renovation or something, that's a capital item, and if you're painting the room, that comes out of operating expenses, just as the teacher's salary and the paper and the pencils and so forth. As Ms. Stunts indicated, a lot of things slid into construction in the existing agreement simply because they were being bonded, and we wanted to undo that.
I guess we have a different perception of capital and construction and operating.
Well, to show you that there is more than one way to skin a cat, I'll recognize Ms. Cadillac.
I believe I also have overheads.
I thought so.
I guess I should start by saying that I graduated from Acton and Boxborough, so my math ought to be pretty good, but I've also had the benefit of actually looking at these slides. Some groups get 20 minutes to present, we'll go fast. What we have here is an overhead showing the increase enrollment of Acton and Boxborough. If you look at this column, here's what schools are at now in 1988, and over here's what Boxborough's got, and the 11 and the 82 is the increase. At the rate we're going right now, the Acton population is increasing at about 11 percent, but the Boxborough population is going up at 82.9 percent. So there you have the significant increase on the Boxborough side. Of course, they would like a three-year rolling scale. They never have to pay for the students they've got unless they go down. As you've seen, there's no chance of them going down, and actually, when you look at the land available in both towns, we know where the houses are going to get built, so my prediction personally is that Boxborough is going to keep going up for quite some time. I have numbers here on my cheat sheet. If the rates, oops, if the increase stayed the same, it would be about 105 fewer students? Let me check my source. 105 fewer students in Acton, so Boxborough's getting the benefit there. That's just in the junior high school. Then if you come down to the senior high school, and again, these enrollment figures are very predictable because we have the students in the elementary school. There isn't a lot of guessing going on. Boxborough doesn't need the three years to know what's coming in the future for planning purposes any more than we do. We know how many kids we've got in elementary school. The senior high school numbers are 26.9 percent on the Acton side and 130.8 on the Boxborough side, so there again, you have it. And at the risk of running out of time, I only have one more slide. I think you've seen this one.
Now, are we going to hear from Leslie, Charlie, later on? Okay. Mr. Liberty.
Jesse Liberty, Till Drive, speaking entirely as an individual. While I think that this proposal is critically important to move the town forward, it's also very important that we move forward as a town. I believe the amendment to limit debate was offered in good faith and voted in good faith, but I lament that there's any possibility that we'll feel unfair advantage or any sense that somebody has been unable to present his case. I'll present briefly the case in favor in less than five minutes, and I invite those who have concerns to please ask the question. We need to move forward together. We have a lot of work to do in the coming months. For me, this vote paves the way for the necessary work at the region. Now, we can discuss whether a better deal is theoretically possible, I'm certain it is, but it isn't possible tonight, and it isn't possible in a timely way, and it isn't likely that people are better equipped than the incredibly able people who put together this deal to get a deal that is acceptable in both towns, and unfortunately or fortunately, it must be voted in both towns. I will vote for this, I urge you to vote for this, and if you have reservations, I urge you to raise them so we can answer them and move forward together as a town. Thank you.
The gentleman at the con microphone.
Paul Gabriel, Asper Crossing. Mr. Hunter had said that apparently in the past 40 years, 95 percent of the construction costs have been borne by Acton, yet he also mentioned that if the region went away, that all the buildings would go to Boxborough, and I'd like that to be clarified, if that's...
Ms. Stunts.
It's part of the regional agreement, which we are working under and will work under unless we amend it or change it. If Acton petitioned to dissolve the region, or if Boxborough petitioned to dissolve the region, the town that did not petition to dissolve the region would own the buildings. So, that means if we dissolved the region, we would have to go out and find land and build buildings.
Other questions? Are you coming to the microphone, ma'am? Yes, go ahead.
Cindy Silverman, Tittle Drive. I don't do this very well, so bear with me. There have been a lot of numbers thrown up. For me, as a citizen and as a voter, I find the numbers to be very confusing, so I have to reduce this to an issue that I can understand. What I can understand is that at present we have a contract that stands at a 95.5 percent ratio that we are not happy with. I have, for the last 10 years, or for the last six years anyway, watched overrides fail. I watch the schools get more crowded. I watch extracurricular activities being removed for lack of space or lack of funding. There is always going to be an argument about why we can't spend the money, why we shouldn't spend the money. The fact of the matter is that we have an obligation to our kids. My kids are almost gone. This isn't going to be for my kids, and I regret that my kids will not have the opportunity for this. But I feel that the three-year compromise, I really appreciate the previous speaker, I wish I could paraphrase all his words, the three-year compromise apparently is something that other regions do. We have to accept the word compromise. We have to accept that this is something that both towns have to be willing to go forward on. And we know that if we stand, sit back here and quibble over little details that can possibly alienate Boxborough, we are not going to have a region, we're not going to have a community, and we are not going to have the solid education that we want for our kids and our children's children. So I strongly urge you to support this contract. Thank you.
I'd like to ask Ms. Stutz, you just made a statement that caused me to... I'd like to ask, Ms. Stuntz, you just made a statement that caused me to really think. Pardon me, Joseph Bolger, Pope Road, Acton, Mass. Did you make this statement just now? Am I correct in understanding that if the regional agreement was to be dissolved because one or both of the towns voted no, that Acton, what did you mean by that? Would the, would all the, Bob, would all the Boxborough students have to go back and be entered into a school of junior high and senior high in Boxborough?
Ms. Stuntz.
Yes or no?
No, she can't answer that yes or no, and please don't ask her to do that. Ms. Stuntz.
If we do not vote the amendment tonight...
Right.
Our original 1955 contract with Boxborough remains.
For how long?
Forever. Unless it is dissolved. If it can be dissolved by one town, there's very specific, very legal machinations you have to go through for one town to try to dissolve that contract. I don't know whether all of you remember, it happened in Plymouth Carver, it was a mess. And, but, by our regional agreement, it would have to be dissolved under our regional agreement because we're under contract. By our regional agreement, during that dissolution, the town that wants out forfeits the buildings. That's our contract that we signed in 1955.
And the question is, what happens to the schools? If Acton was to vote no, does Boxborough and its students take over?
No. If Box, if you vote no tonight, our contract, which we have had since 1955, stands. We still have a region, we pay 95-5 on construction, that's the way it goes. But we still have a contract. This is merely an amendment to that contract.
When is the amendment, when is it dissolved?
It will never be...
It will never be dissolved?
Unless we ask for it to be dissolved.
All right, so let's assume that we did.
But we aren't right now.
Let's assume if the vote is no, it would be. Yes or no? No, she didn't, Mr. Moderator.
No, 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 I understand you, she understands the question. We're having difficulty communicating between the two of you. Ms. Stuntz, try it again. Now, the man has a serious question and he's not...
I understand, I...
...understanding the answer.
Okay. The vote tonight has nothing to do with dissolution. Does that answer it?
I, partially.
Okay.
You know, it's like what's going on in Washington.
Okay.
It's partially.
Now, we're not having any of that here. Now, sir.
Okay.
I'd like to understand the maybe, you know, it won't be dissolved.
Right. A nay vote means that the amendment which we have proposed, which I outlined all the points of, will be voted down. But what will stand is the original agreement which we have had since 1955. That still stands, that will go on, and that will continue to go on.
But you never answered the question as how and when one of the towns backs out of that.
There are, there are very strict rules for backing out.
Okay.
Some of them are in the agreement, some of them are in state law. If any town wanted to back out, they would have to go through a thorough legal search to figure out how to do it. And then they would have to petition, I believe you have to petition both the state and the other town in order to do that.
I see. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to explain why I misunderstood evidently the question. There's a $70 million special town meeting coming up in December that hinges upon what I, the way I interpreted the first answer. Thank you.
Is there another person who wishes to speak on the pro side? Yes, the lady at the front? Go right ahead. Someone might help you lower that microphone.
Hi, Annette Lockery, 57 Windsor Avenue. I'm not pron, oh, I'm, just have a question. I think it might help a lot of people in assessing, thank you, in their own mind, the overall issue. I think the point was very well made that a negotiation has a very, very difficult process behind it. And I think it's, one of the things we're looking at here is all the advantages to Boxborough. But I think clearly, the folks that negotiated on behalf of Acton realize that we have a lot of advantages too. And very likely, in Boxborough right now, there's somebody getting up and talking about all the advantages to Acton. But I think that would help folks in this room to be told by the folks who know the details, what are all the good advantages to us? Despite, you know, yeah, maybe there are the certain advantages to Boxborough we've been outlined, but if people know about what the real advantages are to Acton that haven't been highlighted so far, that might help folks in their consideration. Thank you.
Let me, are you making a suggestion or asking a specific question?
I asked you a question.
Well, I think that they were highlighted, but Ms. Stuntz, if you want to review some of the highlights, go right ahead. Well, the lady asked a question, Mel. I'm going to give Ms. Stuntz an opportunity to respond to your question.
Very, very briefly, our advantages are, we get rid of the 95-5 to something a bit more reasonable. The capital, the capital expenses go down to per pupil from 95-5, which is a lot more reasonable. And we have the possibility of addressing our enrollment issues at the region, which at the moment, I think, are not as possible as they could be.
Mr. Richter. Your microphone is not on, Ed. Sounds as if it's on now. Try it again.
Hello?
Yes, you're on.
Okay. I think both the sides have been eloquently expressed, and I move the previous question.
Do I hear a second? All in favor of ending debates, say aye. Those say no? It is almost unanimous. Debate is cut off. We will now vote, and we have to vote by ballot. Will the tellers come forward, please? Now, what you, what you have, I believe, now, this is very important now, this is not easy stuff. You have a, you have a sheet of paper that's somewhat light green with a yes or no on it. You are going to tear that in half. Am I going too fast? Okay. You are going to put one of them that you don't want to put in the ballot box in your pocket. You are not going to give it to anyone else. And then you're going to file up here, I believe by section, and the tellers will give you some instruction. And you will deposit the either yes or no in the ballot box. No, I think you have to deposit it in the ballot box, you can't hand them down by row. There is a certain legality that we try to maintain. Now, can we have a quiet, please? Please, quiet, quiet, thank you. There is a certain legality that we've got to maintain. We don't hand ballots to other people and have them, it's a good idea. All right, we do it in church. We hand the money down, or we pass the plate across, but this is a political event here, ladies and gentlemen. Yeah, I would tell the constable that when we start voting, we will close the doors and not let people in or out. Belle, would you like to come to the microphone and, you would not like to come to the micro, would you appoint someone, maybe Mr. Katie, or someone who knows how we're going to do this that can explain it quite simply? Maybe the former town clerk? They're all pointing at each other. All right, go ahead, Char, I mean, Belle, tell them how we're going to work this.
We have two boxes. There'll be one on one side of the aisles, another side, another aisle. You're going to come down in an orderly fashion. We'll have tellers assigned to each section. Those tellers will tell those people to rise and come down and, you know, come down, put your ballots in, go back to your seats. When that section's done, they'll be all seated, the next section will come up, and they'll be coming down. Bring a, bring only, deposit only one ballot. There'll be two people there watching to see that only one vote gets put into each box.
Are we still using the death penalty for people who try to put two in?
No, we have whipping.
All right, whipping, good. Okay, why don't we get the ballot boxes in place and have the tellers start to bring them down? I know this is going to be long and lengthy. What I think we will do is, when all the ballots have been cast, we will move on to the next article and not wait for them to be counted. We will count them, and as soon as they're counted, we'll interrupt whatever we're doing and give you the count. Well, I try to, that's a, that's a pretty good suggestion, but it, we can't do it because I can't put a ballot in someone else's hand. I don't want to put your ballot in someone else's hand. Now, I'm not going to pass, I tell you, you, the box gets dropped, no, we're going to do it this way, I'm sorry, I'm not going to take the time to really explain it to you, believe me, we have thought this out. I am willing to appoint a subcommittee to study this later, though. Okay, tell us, would you begin to... One of the gentlemen in the audience was talking about his memory of when we had 3,000 people show up, that was a secret ballot, and I think we only had a couple of ballot boxes. That was a long vote. This will also be long. But democracy is not quick. Yeah, after you've voted, please go back to your seats and sit down. Thank you very much. We have 200 to 300 in the other room. Do we have a ballot box there for them? So we have a third ballot box. A virtual plethora of ballot boxes. Yeah? Am I getting a, what am I getting? Yeah, if they, let them into the room as long as they have a card.
Double?
They gotta have a card, they gotta have a double card like this. And then they get those, let them into the room to vote. And then they get those, let them into the room to vote. Oh, is that right? Now he's legal to vote, I would guess, yeah. Hey, Ann, I see you made it. Yeah. Did they argue which piece? Boy, this is fun. This is fun. Oh, yeah, right. We're gonna have to pass a, except a new state law. Oh, well, okay. Oh, sure, that's, you got it, yeah.
Right on top of it.
Oh, gee, that is, you know, that's, my daughter, my, uh, that's why. There's a guy who said, "I want to yield some of my time."
Yes, yes, that was, yeah. Because I know a couple of his friend of ours, like, you know, Charlie had about five more shots. Hey, no grass grows under his feet. That happens when you get older. But when you see it in a person twenty-five years old, that shot, you hate. I was afraid she was going to take it personally. Wait, Charlie, nobody's going to take it personally.
It was on the, uh, on the sewer article. The school committee wants to make it very important.
Yeah, I know. Fine. Okay, thank you. I had thought it was on something else, but fine. Great. Thank you. Well, I never had a goal that big.
Hello. When the last seven come down from there, the only section left is the center room.
Okay.
And I'm going to have them start up the ceiling, the last ones from the top. They're finishing up with the box up there.
Okay, great. Thank you.
He's running him, my God.
Yeah, I know. Okay, fine. I, I need to check on something. Has, uh, everybody voted at least once? If, if there is somebody who hasn't voted, if they would come down front now before we put the ballot boxes away, we will take your vote. I think everybody's voted. I do apologize for putting you through that process. What we will do now is we'll move on to Article Three, and when we have the count, we will announce it. Article Two. It's just wishful thinking. Article Two, Mr. Hunter moves that the town bylaws be amended as set forth in the article. Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Hunter?
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to try to be as fast as I can on this. This is a event in a 14-year process that I've been involved in, and there's a lot to say. But a lot of people have been working on the sewer project in the last few years. A Sewer Action Committee composed of a number of task forces with more people than I could name. I will name the steering committee because they entitled to that recognition. Nancy Tavernier and I are co-chairs, from the school committee, Mike Scanlon, from the finance committee, John Penderville, who is also the chair of the financial task force, Board of Health, Mark Conneby, planning board, Pat Helm, who is also the technical review task force chair, Andy McGee from the conservation commission, Art Gagne is a citizen at large, who is also the communication task force chair, Bob Johnson, the chair of site acquisition identification task force chair, and ex-officio staff support from Doug Haley, Jim Demming from the water district, and our hired consultants Woodward and Kern, who we have two representatives tonight, and I hope I won't need to refer them for a question, but if I do, I'll have to ask the moderator to let you have them vote. Have them speak, rather. Yeah, I wouldn't mind having them vote. The slide that's up is what we're here for. 14 years ago, Board of Selectmen Chair asked if I would take over the ongoing sewer struggles, and somehow I'm still here. Let's review a little bit briefly. One of the advantages of sewers, they don't fail. A septic system does. It starts failing the day you start using it. Its nominal life is 20 years, 30 years is very good. Sewers improve the public health, they avoid the unsightly mounding that you're seeing around town now that you have to get your leach field up above groundwater. If you want to see the most horrible example that I've seen, look at about 170 School Street where their whole hillside has been denuded and a great Chinese wall built. Sewers enhance the value of property, permit commercial tax growth. And contrary to the great protestations we had with people who opposed them in the 80s, the lack of sewers has demonstrably not stopped growth in Acton. I'm, I'm sorry to tell you that from 1985 to tonight, you have seen warrants with cumulative 24 warrant articles before tonight, one ballot question, and for all legislative activity, we still don't have a pipe in the ground. Tonight, in this warrant article, we are going a step further than we ever have because we are going to discuss the capital assessment bylaw. We have never gotten to this point before. But the more important point tonight is the following article, the money appropriation for additional funds that we found necessary, which we'll get to. The effect of the vote under Article Two bylaw. Even if we end up with an unworkable, unmanageable bylaw because of amendments, or if somebody decides to table it, or whatever happens with the bylaw tonight, we have some months to work on that. We do not need this bylaw by October 15th. Contrary to the money vote under Article Three, without a yes vote on that article... Beyond the betterment, the other component is operation and maintenance. This is a recurring expense, but it's only charged to the connected users. Now, we want to encourage everybody to connect, but if you're not connected, you're not using it, so you're not contributing the maintenance or the operation of it. The level, the magnitude of that charge may vary with the system expansion. We've already found, as we made this one small expansion, of about fifty thousand gallon capacity that it drove down the operation maintenance a good bit. It will vary with the individual. It will not be, it will be figured on your water usage for the Acton Water District bill, but it seems unfair if somebody waters their lawn a great deal in the summer and somebody else doesn't to figure that into your sewer charge. So we'll do it the way Concord does it, we'll do it on your water consumption in the winter months. And if you want to water your garden in the winter months, then you'll pay for it. It covers the costs simply of operating the system. It is, again, unfortunately, not tax deductible, and we, again, would anticipate that would be charged quarterly. I say this again, I put another slide here because there's been a lot of misunderstanding about it. Operations and maintenance is a portion to the user's proportion to their water bills. It depends how much water you use. And it is not, by the way, practical to measure sewage because of all that solid stuff in there, the meters don't work too well, so we measure the incoming water. Now, I'm going to defer, I'm going to give you some numbers, but I'm going to defer discussion of the cost specifics to Nancy's article, the next article, but to give you a frame of reference for this discussion under the bylaw, the current figures on the district as it stands at the moment, proposed is a betterment of around eleven thousand, five hundred. These are all average numbers, that's all we can do is average.
...in July of ninety-five, as I said, was for five hundred thousand. That area was identified, there were public discussions, there was letters sent out. The DEP in September nineteen ninety-six required us to shrink the area. The smaller area has been widely discussed in public. And we kept pressing the DEP and consultants because they kept telling us and we kept saying publicly that we expected to expand that area. And unfortunately, we didn't get the final word in that until September twenty-fourth, at which point we were giving very late notice to the people that were being added back in. Now, basically, as you can see on this very small map, and anybody, I think there's some larger ones outside, or we can show you a larger one. The yellow is the shrunken two hundred and eighty percent of two hundred and fifty thousand gallons. The dark areas are the ones that we're adding back. Now, why are we adding back capacity at such a late date on such short notice? The reason is time. October fifteenth, we must submit our paper bundle, our barrel of papers, to DEP to qualify for the wastewater pollution trust fund, which is the outfit that will give the zero percent loan. If our paper's not there till October sixteenth, we get no money. If we don't vote the additional money tonight, then we're only on their list for eleven point five million, which would build some sewer, but it would be so expensive to operate that it would be simply not worth considering. We must make that October fifteenth deadline, or this project, in my opinion, is dead. Now, that's why we added back some capacity to try and claim as much loan, as much loan as we can. What the loan is, the state goes out and borrows the money and loans it to us so that essentially it's a zero percent loan, which is about fifty percent support for the project. Now, the potential boundary changes, we have identified the areas that we would add, one hundred and sixty properties. There is time between now and when all of this comes together. We have some months to adjust those boundaries. Assuming we submit a twenty-one point five total million dollar request to the state for the loan funds, we will get them. And we can then, if there are people in the new districts that have been added that simply hadn't had time to think through it, or have some questions about it, we can work with that. And we're talking about the people in the outside boundaries, the people that are along the trunk pipe, which hasn't changed. We can't do that for, because if the pipe, if the trunk pipe is in front of your house and we can't move the trunk pipe, it's got to go where it's got to go, you then have a legal right to connect and we have a legal obligation to provide you capacity. So if you say, "Well, I don't want to be in the district," that's fine. It's set that next year you can change your mind and we have to accommodate you. The people on the fringes, we can swap around to some degree.
Mr. Hunter, let me just interrupt you because I have an important message. I'm sorry to do this. Massachusetts registration six eight oh dash twenty-one, a blue station wagon. It's in a fire lane, and if someone doesn't move it, it will be towed. I do know whose car it is, but I hesitate to give the name out. But again, it's Massachusetts registration six eight oh dash twenty-one, a blue station wagon. And you live on Spruce Street. I'll say no more. Mr. Hunter.
The precedent for writing people out of the systems is a written street opt-out and a hundred percent signatures, or we can discuss that. If any area opts out, any boundary area opts out, within the capability of the appropriated funds, we'll replace with other people, because there are people that want these sewers. And that process can go on over the next several months, not necessarily be decided here tonight. Again, what we are to decide under this warrant article is a detailed assessment bylaw. It is the first time we've gotten this far, so we have not had any of this discussion in town meeting before. A hundred percent user supporter is still recommended by the Sewer Action Committee, the Selectment, and the Finance Committee. Now, let's get down to the bylaw. One important component of any bylaw for sewer assessment is a betterment. A betterment, I hesitate to call it a tax, but you'll probably think of it like that. It is a sum that is assessed on a specific date. It is charged to all the property that is going to be sued, is going to be served by the sewer. Whether you choose to hook up or not, if the pipe is in the street in front of you, the property is benefited and it is charged. It is a municipal lien against the property once it is assessed. It covers the capital cost, that is, building the system. That betterment is payable over twenty years, or you can pony it up tomorrow, or you can pay it for three years and then pay it off. There's an infinite variety of elections there between immediate and twenty years. We anticipate that it will be charged quarterly, that it will come with your tax bill. It is not deductible, unfortunately, on your income tax. It is part of the basis for sale capital gain calculation if you sell your house. And although the municipality does not require it, most banks, I'm sorry to tell you, will require the balance be paid off on home sale because loan officers just don't like municipal liens. Now, in dividing the capital costs or going to a betterment formula, the state law allows you to calculate everybody's betterment on three, one of three methods. None of them is totally equitable. Some are worse than others. One is based on front footage. If I have a twenty-foot driveway is the only thing I have on the front road and I have a hammerhead lot, I'd love this. If I go on the area method, that's usually a certain, so much per square footage within so many feet of the road. Again, that guy on the hammerhead lot loves that. The guy on the corner, a corner hates the frontage, the guy with the twenty-foot loves it. And there's no particular correlation between area and frontage and sewer usage. So the third method is left to us as a uniform sewer unit. That's a phrase of art that comes out of the state statutes and essentially says you figure out what the average residential unit is and you charge it. But it does at least have some relevance to the amount of wastewater that is produced. The Sewer Action Committee has recommended in this bylaw reflects a choice of the sewer unit method, not the frontage, not the area. It's the least arbitrary. The foundation block is the basic residential unit. We have used another provision of the law to provide a subset of that for a multifamily residential unit at two-thirds. We came to the two-thirds because we found that in this particular district, the average residence is a three-bedroom house, and on a Title V formula, that's three hundred and thirty gallons per day. A multifamily residential unit in this district averages two bedrooms, and that comes out to two-twenty, that's two-thirds, so we went. We would have liked to have gradated the basic residential unit for every bedroom, a one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, four-bedroom, but unfortunately, town council tells us that's illegal. Commercial goes by a formula that's in the bylaw and somehow, I feel, won't be as much of a focus of discussion. And if we get a detailed question on that, I'm going to duck and give that one to Doug, who's helping you here with slides. Now, beyond the betterment, which is charged, I say again, to every property that is in the sewer system. Beyond the betterment, the other component is operation and maintenance. This is a recurring expense, but it's only charged to the connected users. Now, we want to encourage everybody to connect, but if you're not connected, you're not using it, so you're not contributing the maintenance or the operation of it. The level, the magnitude of that charge may vary with the system expansion. We've already found, as we made this one small expansion, of about fifty thousand gallon capacity, that it drove down the operation maintenance a good bit. It will vary with the individual. It will not be, it will be figured on your water usage for the Acton Water District Bill, but it seems unfair if somebody waters their lawn a great deal in the summer and somebody else doesn't, to figure that into your sewer charge. So we'll do it the way Concord does it. We'll do it on your water consumption in the winter months. And if you want to water your garden in the winter months, then you'll pay for it. It covers the costs simply of operating the system. It is, again, unfortunately, not tax deductible, and we, again, would anticipate that would be charged quarterly. I say this again, I put another slide here, because there's been a lot of misunderstanding about it. Operations and maintenance is a portion to the user's proportion to their water bills. It depends how much water you use. And it is not, by the way, practical to measure sewage because of all that solid stuff in there, the meters don't work too well, so we measure the incoming water. Now, I'm going to defer, I'm going to give you some numbers, but I'm going to defer discussion of the cost specifics to Nancy's article, the next article. But to give you a frame of reference for this discussion under the bylaw, the current figures on the district as it stands at the moment, proposed, is a betterment of around eleven thousand five hundred. These are all average numbers, that's all we can do is averages. About eleven thousand five hundred, operation and maintenance on an annual basis, about four hundred and seventy-five dollars. And a connection fee, connection charge, that is, we'll tap the sewer off the pipe in the street, and this will be coordinated with the sewer engineers and the owners personally, to a spot on your boundary line, where you want it. And from there, it becomes a private expense to get it into the house system. And the best number we can give you on that is it's around twenty-five dollars a foot, but obviously could vary depending on the property. Now, to explain some of the issues, which I know are coming up, but by the way, we very, much appreciate it, we've been given, we know we have three adverse motions coming because the people have come and worked with the language and we know about it, and it's a good way to do a town meeting because everybody avoids having one of those big huddles up front while everybody sits and fiddles. I'm going to go through the different situation of three different condominiums, with excuses to Dickens, I call it's Tale of the Three Condominiums. The first condominium I'm going to discuss, I'm not going to show you anything about, it's Nagog Woods. Everybody knows Nagog Woods Village, a very large condominium community way up on the other end of town. They have their own private wastewater treatment facility. It processes about two hundred thousand gallons per day. Their only interest in what goes on here tonight is that they don't want to be charged for building somebody else's system, okay? Reasonable attitude from their point of view. Another condominium is Redstone Condominium, which is, this, by the way, just happened to be a slide that showed some properties. It also, what it actually was done was to show the people that are under waivers, the people that have postponed fixing their septic system with Board of Health permission because they think sewers are coming. Redstone Condominium is here, right here in Kelly's Corner, three buildings with three systems that is dysfunctional. Their septic waste is being trucked out. And I understand quite reasonably, they're hoping that the system is passed, because if the Board of Health ever stops allowing that, the place becomes uninhabitable because there are times of the year the systems have failed, the water runs down across Route twenty-seven to the gas station. We have another condominium community that's represented tonight and will be involved in some of the motions here, Drummer Farms, which is down here along the main trunk route, Redstone Condominium. If they're not trunk, they're very close to it. Redstone is on this particular chart because of their twenty septic systems, two are failed and are all, failed or failing, are also on the waiver list. I showed this slide specifically of Drummer Farms Condominium because we didn't look at it specifically when we were choosing method, but it very clearly shows why we're using the sewer unit method. Their property is well back from the road, they have two private driveways with a total footage of about two hundred feet on the street for eighty condominiums. They also, their property line is well back, so an area method wouldn't catch much of their land. I'm not being critical of the condominium, I'm just using them as a geographic example. Now, Drummer Farms, as it happens, have been very civic-minded and very involved in this process, and will come to Sewer Action Committee meetings with one or two exceptions, I think, ever since we've been meeting since summer a year ago, give or take. And they have advanced a number of issues which have been helpful for us because it's given us an opportunity to deal with them and to anticipate questions that would be asked here tonight and motions that will be asked here tonight. Let's go through some of them. Under betterment, well, could we use a more favorable method? There wasn't much push for that because it seemed so obvious to us, the method that should be used, which is the unit method. Could it withdraw from the district? Well, as I indicated, the problem with withdrawal for somebody that's on the trunk line, which we can't move, is even though you withdraw and we don't figure you in the district and we don't charge you a betterment, next year you can change your mind and your lawyer can come knock on a door and say, "I've got X number of gallons per day and you must accommodate me." They'd have to pay the betterment, but if we've maxed out the system to serve everybody else, then we're in trouble. So that didn't work out. There was some discussion about, well, if we build our own wastewater treatment plant, can we then be exempted from the system? And we said, "Well, yes, probably." But the probably answer from DEP is you'd probably have to treat to the same level which is state-of-the-art practically making drinking water that we are, and that would be on a smaller scale and the expense, if not more, would certainly not be less. Could we reduce the assessment units? Well, we did, they were very helpful in that regard, and they focused us on the condominium multi-unit. Multi-unit being one with common walls. And indeed, out of their request in that regard, we evolved the two-thirds unit that I talked about. And the last issue, which will be discussed here, I'm sure, in the amendments, is the general tax contribution. In other words, through general taxation, could the cost of the sewer-ing of the people in this district, and particularly the people that were asking for it, be shifted onto the general taxpayer? Some of the issues in regard to cost shifting under operation and maintenance, again, come right back to general tax contribution. We had requests that, "Well, I'm going to pay so much for this system." And it is, an expensive system. There's no two ways about it. Every time we come back for sewers, the cost goes up for a number of technical reasons, which are beyond our control, beyond acting's control, anyway. So basically, we were asked, you know, would the general taxpayer contribute to my flushing the toilet? And we didn't take too positive an attitude toward that, based on the vote nineteen ninety-seven, where we were instructed by town meeting that should be a hundred percent user-funded. I also anticipate a lawyers amendment, which has been in my office several times, asking for dispensation that failed and waived, systems not have to hook up to the sewer system, which seems to be contrary to the Title V regulations, we'll talk about that later. And in regard to hook-up expenses, we've had requests to run those pipes from the sewer tap on private property to the unit that's involved, and particularly up condominium driveways. And we have very politely declined to do that, that we don't think that it's appropriate to put public pipes in private way. And if we did it for one person, where do you draw the line? The next guy says, "Well, I'm further back from the road from my neighbor," and you get into that business. However, we have always said that we will, and we will, let RFP a master contract for connection, because we want to encourage connection. And when the streets are open and the pipe is there, we're going to have a contractor on unit volume who you can tap into to do your work, so you don't have to go out and contract with somebody individually. The town will do that, and that will be available early on. Of course, after the system is completed and the street is closed up and somebody then later wants to hook up, they're going to have to open the street and do it themselves. Now, another issue that has been brought to us, and I know will be discussed, is the cost of expansion. This district, just like the nineteen eighty-six and eighty-eight districts for South Acton Center and Kelly's Corner, quite reasonably has expansion capability built into it. Think about it. We're going to run a trunk pipe from up by the schools down to Adam Street. We hope, in fact, we were expecting in this district to have almost twice the capacity that we're actually going to be able to start with, and we hope to go beyond that. Do we want to put in a small pipe, adequate for this district, and then come back in a few years and dig up the street all the way down to Adam Street to put in a bigger pipe? I think not. So we have planned to put in a bigger pipe. We have planned for expansion of the pump stations. We have planned for a little more space in the building that will house the sewer treatment plant for expansion. And the issue has been brought to us, and we have made some allowances, I'll discuss in a minute, in regard to not charging that to the first district people. But there has been a question of tax, general tax rate versus the Middle Fort Pond Brook users relative to the cost of expansion. There was some attempt to work out a loan agreement whereby the tax, general taxpayer would carry the incremental expansion costs, and then it was proposed that if the other district wasn't built, that it would ultimately be put back on the first district. It got very complicated, and Mike Callahan ended that discussion very quickly when he simply looked us in the eye and says, "It's illegal." However, we have made a provision where the commissioners will be in a position, the sewer commissioners, which temporarily the Selectment, ultimately you're going to have a, get this thing going, we're going to have a separate set of elected sewer commissioners, will apportion the costs in that regard. There is going to be some attempt in this meeting to apportion the costs, but there's already a provision in the bylaw, and I direct you to Article Two, Paragraph Four, Assessment Rates, the last sentence, which says in part, "In establishing such rate, the sewer commissioner shall apportion the total construction cost between," I can hardly read it here, "between costs required to serve the Middle Fort Pond Brook area and costs required to serve future areas within the town, and shall assess owners within the Middle Fort Pond Brook area only such costs as a reason necessary to service such area." The rest of it applies to a technicality in regard to the schools. So there is a provision there. I suspect the big difference is as to how much, note the word "costs." Now, the motions that will be offered have various share formulas based on assumptions. Future districts, future sewer-ing is dependent on allowance by the DEP if it goes in the ground, or the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency if it goes in the river, nice bureaucratic division. They have to grant permits, they give us the terms and conditions. As I indicate, we know where we are with this hundred percent of two hundred and fifty thousand gallon per day because we have done the studies, we've done the technical work, we've worked with DEP. But what tomorrow would bring in another district, we have no idea. Our estimates and our plans for moving forward are hopeful but speculative, and shifting money out of the Middle Fort Pond Brook district costs to the future would have an unknown impact on the municipal budget, which is also a matter of some concern. Now, the number eight hundred and fifty thousand gallons per day, I happen to know, is going to be mentioned in one of the mandatory motions attempting to do some allocation of costs on town meeting floor. It assumes that that figure has been mentioned by Sewer Action Committee and Doug Haley and other people, mostly some months ago, when we were taking a hack at, what could we handle if we can get into the river? Surface water discharge into the Aspet. You know, there are five other sewer plants on the Aspet, all been there years ahead of us, all a much lower level of treatment, but the river is in terrible shape, and the environmental groups quite rightfully are requiring the EPA to clean it up. And the EPA is telling us that even if we discharge drinking water into it, we have to do something more. Now, we don't know what studies of the whole river system will be required before we get into the, into the river. We hope none, but there may be some and we may have to pay for them. We don't know what the environmental impact statement process will be. We do know on this project, we don't know what those costs will be, we don't know what terms or treatment standards would be required for a river discharge. We don't know how many nitty-gritty thing, how many pump stations would be needed for a new collection system, and they're very expensive. And you can't sit down with a map and estimate the number of pump stations. You have to go out and do survey work. We haven't the ghost of an idea what ledge is like in the other district. We found a lot more in this one when we did our boardings. So we're going to be asked to look at a ratio, simply a straight-line ratio between two hundred and fifty thousand gallons per day, a hundred percent of that, as opposed to some percentage of eight hundred and fifty thousand gallons per day, and what's that going to tell us? I don't know. But that, I don't know, in the sense of costs shifted out of the, this district to other people on the general tax burden, is going to be an obligation for everybody. And this project is financed by bonds. Full faith and credit will be pledged to the bondholders, they come first. If X number of dollars is put on the tax rate and the municipal budget is too tight that year to accommodate it, then something else gets bumped off because the X dollars to the bondholders is first in line. And if trying to fund a full municipal budget with X in it requires a proposition two-and-a-half override, and that override loses, something gets cut. I don't know what, I don't know what we're talking about. My best guess, well, it's not my guess, actually, I asked Woodward and Kern to guess, but I stressed "guess." I asked them last couple days, "Give me your best current guess on what a river-discharged district with eight hundred and fifty thousand gallons, either at eighty percent or a hundred percent, will cost?" And they said forty-four and a half to fifty-one and a half million dollars. Consider the fact that, and we'll be talking about this, that we're showing you a variance between nineteen ninety-seven and tonight, of between eleven point five and before we expanded the district, eighteen point five million dollars, when we did detailed design. Look how those costs changed. And how can we accurately estimate something, a cost in the future in order to work out an allocation formula tonight? I suggest that we cannot. I also suggest that a straight-line relationship between gallons is completely inappropriate because, among other things, you may have different level of treatment. Now, this first district is already subsidized by being given a free disposal site. I would submit that the Adam Street site is certainly worth some amount of money. We are planning to, under the fourth sentence in Article Four, allocate, the estimates stand at the moment, and these will get refined, about nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars that will be for additional size in the pipe, that will not be borne by the users in the first district. And they also have been benefited by the prior design and exploration work that we did in the eighties. Now, we've also had some questions put to us, a little heat, I guess, fair to say, "But who votes on the sewer district?" There have been several questions at several of our open forums of the Sewer Action Committee. "Well, how many guys on that group are in the sewer district?" And I think of the steering committee, the answer was two of the volunteers that came forward. I didn't count all the task force, but of course, it was a matter, and anybody could walk in the door and work on this for the last three years. But we only have one set of town boards and committees, we only have one town meeting, and this is similar to zoning, which may affect less than the whole town it's voted on in this process. Basically, what we're going to talk about under this article, and I will be done in just a moment, is a balancing of public benefit versus private interest. There's nothing pernicious or unpleasant about the word "private interest." We all have private interests, we all consider them every day. You, and you alone, for your vote, are going to have to consider what the public benefit is here and what the private interest is, and whether that seesaw, if you want, tips one way or the other. But I would submit that, given the funding situation, that is, if we don't have any no-interest loans in a future year, that you automatically, right there, double the cost of the project, and everything else that has gone on up to this point, I would submit that I think after fourteen years of the modern effort to get sewers, we are tonight at a defining moment. And it all comes back again to that first slide, which you were supposed to have ready to put back up. A little staff problem here, we'll have to discuss this in the morning. But you all remember what the first slide was. After all of those warrant articles, Acton is still the largest, ah, never mind, largest town in the Commonwealth with no municipal sewers. And I think that says a lot. There are nine private sewer systems in town, but for years and years and years of effort and hours and hours and hours of effort by any number of volunteers, for one reason or another, we still have no sewers. Now, I hope we'll have a good and lively discussion on the bylaw. One way or the other, we'll finish that discussion, and then we'll move on to Nancy's article, and I hope you'll vote the money under that article. Thank you very much for listening.
I think before we go on, I'll give the vote on the article that we voted on, Article One. It was one thousand and thirty-four, yes, one hundred and thirty-eight, no. So the motion has passed. Now, let's see, I think we're going to hear from two more boards, we're going to hear from the Finance Committee, I believe. Yeah, John, go ahead. I mean, Tom, excuse me. I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Mr. Moderator, John Prendeville is going to give the position of the Finance Committee, but he's going to make it as part of a presentation. John, when's you going to, what are you going to present it? At the second article. What is our position on this? We recommended approval of this unanimously. Sorry for this slight confusion.
No, no problem. Did the school committee wish to make a comment on this? I believe they did. Is that correct?
Mike Scanlon from Twenty Freedom Farm Road. I represent the school committee on the Sewer Action Committee. The Acton School Committee has voted unanimously to support this series of articles. It is the committee's opinion that the following series of articles are an efficient and creative solution to the wastewater treatment problems that beset both the community at large and our school campuses in particular. And we, we as a group, as a committee, ask you to support these articles.
Okay, we will now open it up. Mr. Aronson is back from purgatory. Mr. Aronson is back from Purgatory in the other room. Thank you very much, Steve, you did an admirable job. I think John Murray is out there at the moment, so I'll recognize you. Thank you again.
Mr. Moderator, Steve Aronson, 236 Newtown Road. Absence does not make the heart grow fonder.
But out of sight, out of mind does.
But I was having withdrawal symptoms, so I decided to come back. Mr. Moderator, I'm speaking this evening on behalf of the Acton Economic Development Committee, for which I am the chair. This is a committee that was formed by the Board of Selectmen last year as a study committee initially, an advisory committee, and then constituted as a committee to provide advice to the Board of Selectmen this year. There were three items that I would like to make mention of, if I might, regarding all of the sewer articles that you're going to hear about this evening and perhaps even later. The first is that the committee is made up of a diverse group of folks who are interested in economic development throughout the town. They include two members of the Board of Selectmen, member of the Finance Committee, two members of the Planning Board, two members of the Acton Area Chamber of Commerce, and three members from large, at large throughout the town. Committee's mission is to enhance the value and desirability of our community by supporting current commercial and industrial businesses, encouraging the absorption of underutilized property, and attracting new businesses that meet the long-term needs of the town. Thank you. Our goal for this year, and we're working in concert with the development of the update to the master plan, which is taking place and which Josh Turnan mentioned earlier in this evening, is to promote current and new commercial development within the context of the master plan, to broaden the tax base, and to reduce the tax burden on residential taxpayers. That's our goal for the economic development for this town. In that regard, our committee who met last week discussed the sewer issue for our community, and decided that it's probably the single most important impediment to achieving these two goals that we have in our community. Without sewers, we cannot compete on an economic basis for commercial and industrial build-out in accordance with the master plan. And we're not talking about nuclear generation facilities here, folks. We're talking about the kinds of businesses that the citizens of our town five years ago, and this year, and the update, have decided are appropriate for our community. Without sewers, we cannot compete with our neighbor towns, including Boxborough, for whom we've just had an important vote as a friendly competitor and a joint partner. We will be losing out to towns like Boxborough and others because we do not have sewers and because our systems that we currently have are failing. In that regard, for the same reason, Kelly's Corner will not be the kind of place that we want Kelly's Corner to be unless we have sewers servicing that area. We look at the sewer proposal that has been so eloquently demonstrated by Selectman Hunter as an absolutely essential investment in the future success of not only our community, but in reducing our residential tax bills. And without sewers, they will continue to go up unchecked, because the amount of residential tax base will continue, and commercial and industrial tax base will be diminished on a percentage basis. We consider this a necessary investment of your dollars upfront in order to reap huge dividends in the future. You must spend money to make money, and the only way to substantially reduce your residential tax bills without cutting the services that we all know so near and dear to our hearts is to increase appropriate growth in commercial and industrial tax base. Sewers are the way to get it done. I congratulate the Sewer Committee for coming up with this proposal, and we unanimously recommend its approval. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Before we move on, Dr. Zimmerman, am I correct that we also know the results of the Boxborough election? Would you like to tell the assemblage here?
When I left, they had done an informal count, and it was 180 to 30 in favor of the amended regional agreement.
Thank you. Now, I'll recognize the gentleman at front. Remember, we still have pro and con microphones.
Yes.
These are the pro microphones, those are the con microphones. If you just want to make an amendment, you can go to either.
My name is Dave Garrett, I live in, on Meeting House Road. I'd like to make an amendment to Section Four, Article Two, and I have a presentation to make on it.
Go right ahead, sir. Do you have a view graph that outlines your amendment?
Yes, I do.
Yes, please.
Would you like me to make the presentation before putting up the amendment, or the other way around? Because the amendment is on the page.
I think it would probably be best to put it up so people could see what they're voting on. You make the amendment, we'll have it seconded, then you're free to make your presentation.
This doesn't mean, oh, I need my, one of those. This doesn't mean much without the presentation, but, should I just read the amendment now?
Yeah, I think, yes.
I, David J. Garrett, moved that the proposed Section Four assessments rate be deleted in its entirety and replaced with the following. The sewer commissioners shall establish the assessment rate for land within the Middle Fort Pond Sewer Brook district based upon a proportion of the estimated total constructions costs required to construct a sewage system capable of serving the planned expanded area of 850,000 gallons per day. In establishing such rate, the sewer commissioners shall assess owners within the Middle Fort Pond Brook area only such costs as are reasonably necessary to serve such area. Said assessment rate should be calculated as follows. Through accepted engineering principles, establish the total construction cost for the planned expanded 850,000 gallons per day sewage system. Establish a proportionate cost, prop cost, for the initial 250,000 gallon system in relation to the cost of the total system, using the formula 25 over 85 times the total cost of the whole system. Subtract from the proportional cost, and this is no change, to what's in there, the pieces that are required to serve the school, recovered section, recovered pursuant to Section Three. Four, set the assessed cost per sewer unit equal to that base cost that you've just calculated, divided by the number of sewer units in the district. The difference between the actual construction cost of the initial 250,000 gallons per day system and the prop cost to be covered in future years through assessments on land in expanded 850,000 gallons district as the sewer system is expanded into the full district. I have a very short presentation.
No, 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 hold it, let's, I need a couple of things before we go on. Before I ask for a second, I'm going to ask the town council to give us his view on the legality of this amendment.
The amendment is in legal form, and it's appropriate for the town meeting to consider.
Fine, thank you. Do I hear a second to the amendment? Okay, now, sir, you may make your presentation.
May I have five minutes for now?
Yes, you may, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Do you have a daughter here, too, by the way?
No.
Okay.
That's why I need the full five minutes.
All right.
Okay. First of all, I want to make the point, I am not against sewers, I am fully in favor of the sewer project, and I want to see the sewer project succeed. The issue I have is that there's an unfair assessment of costs onto the initial district as compared to all of the people who are eventually going to be benefited. I'm fully in agreement with the 100% user funding. I just define users as all of the users who are going to use it, not just the ones that are going to use it initially. As I say, the sewer will be 100% user-funded with my amendment. The initial district size, as Dory has already presented, is 250,000 gallons per day approximately. There are plans to expand it to 850,000 gallons per day. I can quote two of the Selectmen, who are co-chairs of the committee. Nancy Taverner, last Thursday, said we should be into the river within about two years. I have another quote from Dory, I've lost my book. The other quote I have is that, from Dory Hunter, is adding streets drives down the unit cost, which is precisely the point of this amendment. As you grow the sewer district, the cost per user, both betterments and operating system charges comes down. It's unfair for the initial district to be saddled with all of the fixed cost. The initial construction benefits both the initial and the future users. What is the purpose of this amendment? I repeat again, it is not to, it is not to defeat the sewer district. I will urge a vote in favor of Amendment Three, which is the appropriation vote, with these amendments passing, such that it's, it's fair. As already pointed out by Dory, by voting for these amendments, you do not endanger the sewer district. It, the purpose of this amendment is provides a fair and accurate cost-recapture methodology to finance the initial Middle Fort Pond Brook sewer district and subsequent districts. It ensures that each succeeding district pays its fair share of construction costs, the fixed costs. It helps ensure that Acton sewers are successful, because it makes it fair. Also, as pointed out by the previous speaker, you know, it will help us in our economic expansion in the town. The major problem with the current article is that all of the fixed costs are put on the initial district. Now, I have, still, there's $960,000 of identified cost in this initial district, which Dory spoke about, and there's still no specific way of which that is going to be recovered from future users. The article as written does not specify how it's going to be recovered, and you'll notice that in the presentation made by Dory Hunter, he did not say specifically how that money is going to be recovered. And from attending the meetings, Sewer Action meetings, I could not see them say how it was going to be recovered from future users. It was all going, it was going to be recovered, it's going to be recovered from the initial district. The problem is, the initial district residents will never benefit from later economies of scale. We're going to subsidize the future district's residents. Another important point is, once a betterment is set, it can never be changed, i.e.